Okay. Here he is. Commissioner? We're online. Okay, we're on. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 4th session of the Daly City Planning Commission. Will everybody please rise and join me to the pledge of the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have a roll call, please?
Talarico?
Here.
Edelman?
Here.
Sylvester?
Here.
Satori?
Here.
Crump?
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 8th, 2016?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We come to number one on the agenda. Use permit UPR 21611924. Can I?
Thank you. This is a proposal for an existing commercial building so as to include a 723 square foot of residential studio apartment. A portion of the proposed building for conversion appears to have been used for storage purposes for the past several years, and a single car parking garage is being proposed to provide the parking services to the proposed studio apartment, and it's consistent with zoning requirements. To avoid vehicles or stoppage of vehicle in front of the street or blocking sidewalk, an automatic garage door opener should be installed. And two pedestrian doors along the Pueblo Street frontage shall be replaced by new doors. As you'll see as I go further with the slides, the frontage of the building where the studio apartment is being proposed, it's, I think, long overdue for some improvements. And in front of the business along Geneva, there are several signs that were not permitted over the years, so we thought this would be the best opportunity for the appropriate owner to beef up his building, to make it attractive in the area. And we are proposing professionally designed signs to be installed, and they will require building permit approval. The interior storefront facade improvements shall be required along Geneva Avenue. These facade improvements may include use of paint, siding materials, and trimming. We also recommend that the applicant bring samples of materials to be used for staff approval. Same thing applies to the facade improvements on the studio side. Same materials will be required to match with the storefront along Geneva Avenue. Planning Commission may deem certain conditions necessary as you see fit. What stuff is proposing is not conclusive. The visiting map shows the proximity of the project site, which is right there between Pueblo and Geneva Avenue, and it's overlooking the Cow Palace down there. This is the project sign, and this is where the studio apartment is being proposed along its faces or its fronts, Pueblo Street. And these are the existing businesses. There is a grocery store on the first opening here, and the middle one is a laundromat, and there is a restaurant on the end. These are the proposed floor plan. This is the existing floor plan, and the proposed one is this one here to the right. If you look at it, the applicant is proposing a hallway that will lead into the studio so somebody can get at the front of the building and walk directly into the studio apartment. If they drive in, they can park the vehicle, and also a door is being provided to access the studio. These are the elevations. The top one is the proposed one, which shows the existing pedestrian doors and a garage door. That's the garage door that would require an automatic garage door opener. And we are also suggesting or recommending improvements throughout the front of the Pueblo Street so that that elevation will look slightly modern than what it is at the moment. This is the color elevation that the applicant is proposing, and you can see some improvements already based on the color elevation that was provided. The bottom elevations depict the existing conditions of the building. It has graffiti which looks quite picturesque. It doesn't look as awful as ordinary graffiti, but this was well designed. But the applicant is proposing to remove it and give us the nice shaded paint. This is the current conditions of the side of the building facing Pueblo where the studio is being proposed. As you can see, there's an existing garage door which would be improved so that it can be automatically opened. And those pedestrian doors, standard doors on the right, will also be enhanced with modern doors. And we are recommending the upper level of the doors to be improved so that it looks much modern. This is the existing condition of the building facing Geneva Avenue. These are the signs that the staff is recommending to replace with professionally designed signs. And we are also recommending the front facade to be enhanced so that it can be distinguished, completely different from the way of the building where the studio is being proposed, and it should depict a typical storefront of a modern city. Since this is the storefront facing Geneva, I think what he's supposed to say that that it will look very nice in the area. These are the surrounding land uses. This is that building there is exactly facing south of the proposed development. And on the right, that's overlooking the Cow Palace. These are probably just to the north when you are standing in front of Geneva. This use permit is upon the planning commission tonight to determine if the studio apartment is a commercial building, warranty is a use permit. Typically, zoning requirements, if there is a new use that's going into an existing commercial building, that means it changes the configuration and the zoning requirement, you know, the building would be called mixed-use building. In this case, it was only commercial. Now, with the coming of the introduction of the studio apartment, it now qualifies to be a mixed-use building. And they are also being asked to determine if the land-usage compatibility will be established by the introduction of the studio apartment. Our planning commission recommends that the city council take the following actions: adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report, affirm the environmental assessment, approve use permit 2-1611924, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. The building owner and his architect are both here in case you have any further questions for the interlopers. Thank you.
Commissioner Satori, you have any questions for either?
No. Okay.
Mr. Sylvester?
I would like to hear from the owner and maybe if we have any cards for this particular project.
No.
The applicant, come forward, please.
Excuse me, through the chair. I'm a little confused if I've got my wrong glasses, but I'm more concerned about looking at that area, and you have a laundromat, you have a restaurant, and you have three commercials. And the parking on a street there, I just noticed one car was parked in front of a fire hydrant already. I mean, I'm just saying. So the parking, and then I noticed on another slide, there was a truck parked in front of the garage door that's going to be open. We're going to have some regulations and some ticketing in that area. It looks very congested. So do you have drop-off people coming in to go to the restaurant and go to the laundromat? Where do they park now? Are we going to add another wedge in there with these people in the studio apartment that can't get out and can't get in? I would just, has that been looked at?
If I could...
Let me just take one minute.
Yeah.
Anybody that wishes to speak to this issue, if you'd fill a card out at the door and hand it to staff, you will be heard. You'll have two minutes.
So I just wanted to interject on that note, since I live in that general area. Is, there's usually sufficient parking on the streets, however, the enforcement of parking is not too good around there.
Okay.
So there are usually open spaces for the businesses that are there, however, people just seem to take it upon themselves to park wherever they want. That's just my observation, and I've lived there for almost 12 years.
That's good, and I think that's fine. I'm just saying, we're putting in a studio apartment, and if I'm going to pay an extra amount of dollars, and I got a rolling garage door and I can't get in, I'd like to not react, but proact. So get maybe curbing painted, you know, petition the traffic committee, green, green for stores, red, don't park by the fire hydrant? I don't mean to be facetious, but whoever's going to go in that studio, I see two, three stores, well, green, 10-minute parking. Does that go through the traffic committee, or how does that?
The owner could make that request to the traffic committee, but that's something that's handled separately from these proceedings here. Typically, what happens with the people blocking driveways, once someone gets towed the first time, I think people, I think maybe what's happened over time is that this has been used for storage, so there hasn't been enforcement. It's very possible that it's the owner of the building parking in front of the driveway in that picture. I don't know, but typically, if someone can't get out of their driveway, they will call the police department, and the vehicles will be towed.
Can we do proactive a little bit? If the owner wants, and...
The owner could make a request to the traffic committee, but that's handled on a separate process.
That's my suggestion, because I have trouble parking.
Understand.
Could we have the applicant, we wanted to hear from him?
Well, before we have the applicant come up, I'd like to make a comment. I agree with staff in the sense that the reason why the truck is probably in that driveway there could be the owner of the business blocking his or her own driveway, and that's completely permissible to do. However, once you change it into a resident, and as staff has indicated, all you have to do is make a call to the police department and say, "I can't get out, I can't get in," and they will come out and take the necessary enforcement action. If it even means for the portion of the driveway on the left and the right sides to paint it red and say, "DCPD," or put a sign up on the door, or it says, "No parking anyway." So I think that in itself would be sufficient. That's just my thought, and I think that maybe perhaps this isn't under the purview of what we're trying to decide now. The question I have is, right now, it's zone commercial. We are going to be going to mixed use, and if the property should sell later on, would we end up going backwards if the new owner says, "Well, you know, I want all of it, and I want it all commercial." That's the only concern that I have, but I know we are under a mandate to increase housing in Daly City, and actually, I'm in favor at this particular point in moving forward.
But you still wish to have the applicant come forward?
No, in the absence of cards, I'm fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I, no, we have no cards. Do you think she's... Okay. Well...
Thank you. Does he have a card?
Do you wish to speak to this issue?
I'm just curious about state of the...
Will you please come forward?
Yeah, forgive me for my lack of knowledge.
Not a problem.
But this idea of mandating more housing in Daly City, what is the origin of that? Like, who made up that idea? And like, obviously, you folks agreed with it, but where does that come from?
The state of California mandates that every city have a housing element, and in that housing element, they are given a target housing number that they have to plan for for the planning period. So I believe for this planning period up to 2022, we have to provide property that's zoned for up to 1,200 units?
1,200 units. And then who monitors the maximum occupancy that is recommended or the law says? So I'm a resident of Daly City, and single residence homes with, my husband and I, I think, are the only two people living in a single house, and so with more people comes more parking issues, which have been, you know, illustrated, which I totally agree with.
Through the chair. Federal housing law dictates the city cannot limit occupancy in residential homes. Thank you.
Wow, really?
Yeah.
However, if I could just make a comment, what we do have are guidelines and policies as far as the city in terms of number of required parking spaces per dwelling, and so this plan meets those requirements of having...
This plan that's up for...
Right, the garage and so forth. So there is a planned place that is dedicated to the residents, and it meets those requirements. So that's why this is okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, I just came in. I'm just, again, trying to...
No.
Figure out...
Trying to understand.
Yeah, a lot of congestion, yeah. Okay, very good, thanks.
Thank you.
One more through the chair.
Sure.
We always say this, a garage is to be used for a car. Okay, I just want to put that in a minute, the garage is to be used for a car, so...
Right. In this particular instance, this garage is going to be included in the lease and the rent for this unit.
But the car goes in there.
Parking space meets our dimensional requirements for parking.
May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's recommended we accept the following recommendations. Could I have a motion to adopt the findings as outlined herein?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to affirm the environmental assessment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve use permit UPR 21611924, subject to the conditions of approval identified herein.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Talarico?
Yes.
Edelman?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Satori?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I live up on the hill behind the cowhouse. Go by there every day.
Here we are. Number two on the agenda, use permit, coastal development permit, UPR 91612312. Michael?
Thank you, Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission. This is a request by the City of Daly City for a coastal development permit related to the site maintenance plan for the upcoming calendar and fiscal year for Muscle Rock landfill. The Planning Commission may be aware or may remember, a couple of years ago, we took a look at a similar plan. The, of course, the landfill is in the coastal zone, and so the city is required to grant itself coastal development permit approval. The approval is appealable to the Coastal Commission. Coastal Commission staff's been made aware of this application, and the staff's in communication with them about it. We'll orient the Planning Commission, there's whom may not be familiar with where the landfill is. It's at 150 West Line Drive, of course, adjacent to the Pacific Ocean, west of the Westlake Palisades neighborhood in this general location here. There's a closed Muscle Rock Transfer Station that's at that location, so this is just north of that. So this year's proposed site maintenance improvements include repairing areas of the seawall that were damaged over the past few years, in particular, the winter. Last winter, there was substantial damage to the riprap that exists in this location, which keeps the ocean from intruding into the enclosed encapsulated garbage dump site. So it's important, of course, to maintain that, as well as replacing, repairing, and cleaning existing half-round metal pipes that exist on the site to transport stormwater from the site so that there's not saturation on the site, which could lead to, of course, problems with, again, that trash that's been kept there over the years. So Heyuan Ritchie from the city's Public Works Department is here and is going to give an overview of the particulars in terms of what would be done as part of this permit.
Good evening, Commissioner Satori. My name is Heyuan Ritchie. The planned improvements that we have, I wouldn't call them improvements, but routine maintenance at the site includes, one, repairing the seawall that was damaged over the years. It's been several years since we've done a repair to the seawall, and so this would replenish the rock at the site. This is a photograph of the current condition. We'd like to repair that as soon as possible. Another view of the seawall. This is on the north end of the site. The plans also include, the plans also include cleaning out the half-rouns, as Michael had mentioned. There is half-round shown at this location, and it does fill with vegetation and debris, and every season, we clear that in advance of the stormy season. We've, you know, take temporary measures to protect culverts, and there are some outfall locations, not shown in the pictures, but that with the movement of the site, it is an active landslide area, and so the rocks occasionally will crush, partially crush the outfalls, and so the plan is also to replace those half-rouns, or sorry, those full rounds with new piping so that they're made whole. We have been in correspondence with the Coastal Commission. They would like us to work with them in getting a coastal development permit because we will be working in below the mean high tide, which is their retained jurisdiction, and so we are in communication with them, so they are aware of the project.
So the standard of review for any projects in the city's coastal zone are essentially there are six things we take a look at, and so these are essentially the findings related to those six, and they're incorporated in the Planning Commission's recommended findings for city council consideration. There are no buildings or structures proposed, and there are no improvements that are within 50 feet of the bluff edge in terms of structures that are proposed. There are no permanent foundations or fittings. Public access is not impeded by the proposed maintenance work. This project is consistent with the Resource Protection Combining District that applies to the site. Any grading that would need to occur, which should be fairly minimal if any, would be required to meet state guidelines, and there would be no adverse effect on the site or adjacent areas. Of course, the purpose of this is to ensure, again, that the landfill that's there is completely contained within the landfill area, and so the whole purpose of it is to make sure that there are no adverse effects on the adjacent areas. So with that, the proposal is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, which does provide an exemption for a restoration of damaged structures. The staff is recommending that the Planning Commission forward to the city council adoption of the findings contained in the staff report, affirm the environmental assessment, this sequo determination I just mentioned, as well as recommend approval of the coastal development permit, which is the use permit UPR 91612312. If there's any questions, staff's, of course, available.
Commissioner Satori?
I'm in a full accord with this proposed maintenance activities. My question here is, who will shoulder the expenses here? Is it the city, or the state, or the federal, or what agency is going to shoulder the expenses? How much budget is going to be allocated here?
Sure, so the city currently through its franchise agreement from the solid waste franchise, they provide a fee, an annual fee, that funds the routine maintenance. This particular project will be more significant than typical, and so in that case, you know, we do need to look at long-term what impacts that has on the franchise agreement, and they, you know, we do have the opportunity to go back to them for the site maintenance and long-term maintenance that we work with them.
You're not answering my question. How much is the budget for this? And what is the proposal for this? Where are you going to get the money?
Sure, so I don't have the final number yet. I have, I've been given a couple estimates, and we may need to phase this project because...
Because you can be proposing a lot of things here, and there is no money for that. Where are we going here? Are we just talking here?
Well, Commissioner Satori, the city staff initially gets approvals that it needs, and through that process learns more about what may be required.
I want to be educated also on where are we going to get the money for this?
The answer to your question is that the garbage customers within the City of Daly City ultimately pay for that.
Do you have any ballpark figure, how much is that?
I, we have budgeted about a million dollars for this project.
A million only? With that kind of situation, it could be more than $5 million for me, based on my ballpark figure.
It could be, and so we need to look at whether we need to phase this project with the funding that's available.
Because if you're going to go here and present to us, be sure that you are ready for this. We cannot just be saying, "Okay, we approve this," but in the process, it will not happen.
Through the chair, to be clear, this is the review of the coastal development permit. The city council will receive a full design plan and will also be approving the budget allocation for this, so this is really just the land use component of it.
Commissioner Sylvester?
I think Commissioner Satori brings up a good point, because any new development that starts, it starts here with the Planning Commission, and before it goes to city council, and to hear that the city council may get some information that we didn't receive, I would feel uncomfortable, so I have to thank Commissioner Satori for his question. The other question that I have is, I see that it's gone through the coastal development plan, because I know they do have oversight for all development along the coast, so it has been approved by the coastal development.
No, so tonight's hearing is the first step toward that. The city staff will, of course, present to the Planning Commission, then the city council, and then, as Heyuan mentioned, the coastal... the Coastal Commission is requiring its own permit, because part of their jurisdiction is beneath the mean high tide line. We're going to be doing some riprap repairs. So there's another permit that needs to be obtained from the Coastal Commission itself.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I may, what I'm hearing from you guys, very simply, is this is the initial step toward a project.
Right.
It takes various levels of approval from council and the state.
This is the land use approval. So the Planning Commission does not approve capital projects, right? So you guys.
I want to board them, Chairman. I am not asking for budget, but only the ballpark figure, how much are we going to spend here? Because it's always the, the city council that will try to analyze this, but of course, the Planning Commission should also have the same analysis to what is the cost benefit for this, how much is the budget, how much is the allocation for this?
I understand what you're saying, Commissioner, however, if you listen, that's quite unknown at this time. You've been given a ballpark figure, she said a million dollars, until various permits, and who knows? There may be additional requirements put upon this that would have great influence on the budget. So all we're doing is, as Ms. Motherhead said, was approving, in essence, the land use part of this. And people above our pay grade are the ones that will approve it further.
Well, well, Your Honor, if you're listening to me carefully, I said I'm full accord with this. I'm full accord. While I'm asking some under, underpinning questions, which, which I want to be educated also, as a planning commissioner. Is that, is that very clear?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Edelman?
I, I have no questions.
Mr. Tellerico?
Is my garbage tax going up?
Yes.
That was just a little lovely.
Nothing further, no cards, so motion? Please bring it forward then. We wouldn't want you to be left out. Thank you very much. Karen Dawkins, please step forward.
Sorry, I have never been in this position before, but I had a couple of questions. One is, I don't understand the land use language, because I don't understand that, that use. That's a side note. But what I am really concerned about is that I live immediately above Muscle Rock, and I know that the road to get to this area has a serious breach in it already. And what I imagine are hundreds and hundreds of trips with rocks and material on a road that is already breached in an area where we have had numerous home losses over time with the, you know, the land giving away. And so I'm very cognizant of that breach down there as it, you know what I mean? So I just wanted to speak to that as a risk factor. I, I don't oppose, you know, obviously, these are all good things, but, you know, there might be some consideration done from an engineering standpoint, how many trucks go in, over what period of time, over, you know, is it, you know, is the soil wet? I mean, all the things that people way above my pay grade get paid to think about. But I just want to bring that up as a consideration.
I'm sure that that will be very carefully monitored, and quite honestly, I think if anything contributes to keeping your home in place where it is, it is making these repairs. I think if they were not made, it would have.
Way further down, just to.
Well, yeah, but it's all part of the good old Merced formation, and the same thing, all the way from Avalon Canyon down, down our coast.
Well, what I can tell you is that I am the second closest house to this project. So I know, I know the area intimately, over 50 years. Look directly, here's my house, Muscle Rock, there's the road that the trucks came in.
Yeah.
Right? And right there, there's a breach in that road, right to the edge of the road. And I don't know, I, I might venture to guess that, that might have had some factor in the closing of the, you know, like it was getting, but that's just me thinking. But that breach right there is clear and apparent, and far from the area that's gated off. Right? It's the entry to the area that's gated off down there that they're going to work on.
I think you will find Ms. Ritchie, her department, and it, and the city in general will put very strict contractual requirements, which will preserve you where you are. We like you up there, not down there.
Me too, me too.
And thank you for expressing your concern.
Thank you.
Through, through the chair.
Yes.
If I could just make a note, if we can just provide a note to the city council to review her concern for the access when the repairs are done, I would like to add that.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close. Got a card here.
Oh.
Just clarifying here, so if.
Would you hand the card forward?
Thank you. So if you guys approve this.
One second.
Sure, sure.
Just for the record, your Anthony.
Montez.
Montez. Here you go. Anthony, please.
Thank you. If you guys were to approve this, this is the, actually, I wanted to ask about the land use. Could you guys elaborate more on that? And so if you guys were to approve this, this is, you said, the first stage of the development or the, the repairs. So what is it that you guys are approving?
So this is basically annual site maintenance work on a closed landfill, is what the Planning Commission's considering tonight. It specifically includes the installation of a different, additional riprap at, in an existing revetment wall up against the ocean that currently, and the city needs to maintain, keeping the ocean out of the landfill area to prevent erosion, because it would be a very bad thing if that existing revetment wall was to be breached. So that's the primary reason. And there's also some corrugated half-round pipes that were shown in the pictures that will be cleaned out as a part of this, which is also, it's important to de-water the site, and make sure that rainwater that falls on the site is taken off the site immediately, so it doesn't soak into the ground and create a bigger problem for, for that. And so that's, those are specifically what the Planning Commission's considering tonight.
Yeah, very simply, it's to keep the landfill where it is.
There it is.
And not spread up and down the Pacific coast.
Exactly.
And through the chair, oh, I'm sorry. And through the chair, if I could just add, the main reason for, for this appearing, or this item being brought before the Planning Commission is partly to allow the public to say anything that they have in terms of concerns, and bring them also, so that they're on record for review when it goes to the city council.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt the findings as outlined herein?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to affirm the environmental assessment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve coastal development permit, use permit, UPR nine sixteen one two three one two, subject to the conditions of approval identified herein?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tellerico?
Yes.
Edelman?
Yes.
Sylvester?
No.
Satori?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes. All right, that's the agenda. I would just like to note for the public read record that this is Tendai Muntanga's last appearance before us. He is leaving us for Napa County. Unfortunately, we thank him for all his help and assistance over his time here.
Thank you.
Any further public appearances or staff communications?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to announce that on Saturday, October 8th, there will be a Philippine-American Heritage Month, and this celebration will be held at the Patelli Center in Dodgers. So all of you are invited, in case you have the time to pass by, because there are some presentation there, shows, and so forth and so on. And congratulations to Mr. Tendai, the job well done.
The date again?
October 8th, 11 o'clock to morning, to up, up to 5 o'clock at Patelli Center, Dodgers.
Thank you, Ray.
So all of you are invited.
Any acquisitions, vacations, et cetera? How about a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Or as, as, what was his name?